Good afternoon, or good evening, actually. I'd like to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order for Tuesday, December 19th, 2023. Will the city call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Defoe?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Rogers?
Here.
Ms. Libbit?
Here.
Mr. Havas? Madam Chair, you have a quorum to conduct business.
Thank you. Are there any communications?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we will move into our public hearing. For those of you who haven't joined us before, let me just briefly describe how we conduct business. The city will call the case by the case number. They'll read a brief description of the case. We then ask the appellant to step to the microphone. There's a sign-in sheet to sign in, please, and then verbally state your name and address for the record, and then explain to the board what you're asking for and why. Then the city will read the findings of fact. We'll ask you to agree with those facts, or add any other facts at that time. Then the city will read a recommendation. You can, again, add anything else after they read the recommendation. And then we'll open public comment. So if you're here on a case, that would be your opportunity to speak to that case at that time. Then we'll turn it over to the board to make a decision, and then move on to the next case. Okay? So will the city call the first case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 2328, the appellant, George Vilaj, representing the owner NG Group Homes LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To construct a new single-family residence with a non-conforming front yard setback, 26 feet proposed, 40 feet required. The property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Webster Avenue and Albert Avenue at 30034 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412279009, Zoned R1, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance."
Okay, thank you. Is the appellant present? Hi, if you could step up to the microphone, please?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi there. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is George Vilaj. My address is 55872 Lanswood Drive, Shelby Township, Michigan.
Great, thank you. And can you explain to us what you're asking for and why, please?
We are asking for front zoning variance, and the reason is, we were working on a blueprint, and we did some revisions, and we submitted that blueprint to the building department. That blueprint got partially approved. We did spend some money on the energy code and stuff. Then we submitted a building envelope to find out that our home is a little bit longer, deeper than what the zoning allows. We thought it's gonna go straight with existing homes on the street, which are 26 feet from the street, but this is R1, and the front setback is 40 feet. So that's why we spent some money and time on this blueprint, and asking if we can align with existing homes, which is front setback of 26 feet.
Okay, thank you very much. Stay right there. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact, case 23-28. The appellant, George Vilaj, representing the owner NG Group Homes LLC, is requesting the following waiver from the board: "To construct a new single-family residence with a non-conforming front yard setback, 26 feet proposed, 40 feet required. The property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Webster Avenue and Albert Avenue at 30034 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 2412279009, Zoned R1, Single Family Residential. This appeal is to Section 5.193, Article 22, Chapter 45 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the zoning ordinance. The surrounding properties to the north, south, east, and west are Zoned R1, which is Single Family Residential, and are developed with single-family dwellings in a metal lawn garden subdivision. Field inspection revealed that the surrounding dwellings' exteriors are mostly brick with a mixture of various siding materials. The majority of the dwellings in the surrounding area are mostly one-story, with a few one-and-a-half and two-story dwellings mixed in. Most of the dwellings in this area have detached garages. The homes in the surrounding area were built in the 1950s and range from 900 square feet to 2,000 square feet. Along both sides of Marshall Street, to the north and south, all of the homes have similar legal non-conforming setbacks. Many of the homes in the surrounding area are non-conforming in setback requirements. The appellant is proposing to construct a new residence that will be a 2,269-square-foot two-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a 486-square-foot attached garage. The appellant is seeking a waiver for a 14-foot reduction in front yard setback, 40 feet required, 26 proposed."
Great, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes, I do.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No, not really, no.
Okay. Will the city read the recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration of the following waiver for a 14-foot reduction of front yard setback, 40 feet required, 26 feet proposed, to construct a new residence that will be a 2,269-square-foot, two-story, single-family residence on a full basement with a 486-square-foot attached garage, with the following conditions: that all new construction meets all the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Building Code, that the appellant secure all permits and approvals required for proposed construction. This recommendation is based on the following: the proposed construction is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district; the proposed construction is in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties."
Okay, thank you. Anything else to add before we open public comment?
No, just one thing I can say. Our investment is gonna improve the whole street, we believe.
Great, okay, thank you. So this would be the time that we'll open public comment on this case. If you're here to speak on this case, this would be the time to step forward. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Adam Perry, address 30035 Marshall Street. It's directly across from the property.
Okay.
I'm very good friends with both the neighbors on both sides of the vacant property. I spoke to both of them about said property, came into the zoning office and reviewed some of the files. I'm not sure of the rest of the street, because I did not review the rest of the street, but both the neighbors that are on both sides are not. They are at the 40 feet, so that is not true in the sense of, like, being an exception. The two houses directly right, including mine, minus further than 40 feet. So in that immediate area, they are not irregular. It might be true down the street. I, like I said, I didn't measure everybody's yard, but I did measure both of those people's yards, and they were 40 feet. And then on the other side of, I do disagree with the assessment in the sense of, a lot of my friends live in the Berkeley area across the street, and that's what's being built: homes of 24, 26, 3,000 square feet, with the pillared front porches. And unfortunately, it's driving people out of those communities that have lived there a long time. And to me, I really love the street that we have. There's lots of diversity, lots of young families, single people, elderly people, very wide diverse. And by, you know, upping value very quickly, in the sense of a home that looks like a Berkeley residence on that street, I think, over time, it will push residents out of that area. So that combined with, I couldn't, I didn't understand the 26-foot variance in the argument, because, like I said, I have a decent-sized backyard, and my house is way pushed back past 40, so to me, that's just building a much larger home than everyone else on the street.
Okay.
So, thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you. I just have a question.
Well, if I may, through the chair.
Yes, go ahead.
So, we did our field survey and our survey through our GIS system, and according to our GIS system, all of the homes on that street are non-conforming. There may be a couple that are, but the majority of them are at 26, 27 feet from the property line. Now, wherever he measures his, I don't know how he knows where his property line is and can say it's 40, maybe 40 feet to the street, the edge of the street, but it's, most of them were 26, 25, 26, 27 feet from the property line, which is where we measure from. That's where the setback starts, is at the property line, not at the edge of the road.
Okay, okay. Okay, is there anyone else to speak on public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Friedman?
I, despite the neighbor across the street's objection, if I believe that's some of his statement, I would be in favor of granting this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the setback being 26 feet. It looks to me there is a discrepancy with the perception of 40 feet. I think he's, might be measuring from not exactly the property line. I mean, according to this boundary survey that was given, the house on either side is 26, they're both 26 feet from the property line, so, I mean, this is done by a professional engineer, so I'm gonna go along with that, and if they're aligned, they're aligned, and I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I am fine with it.
Okay. I agree, so, with my colleagues, let's see, Mr. Friedman, will you make the motion, please?
Sure. In regard to case number 23-28, the appellant, George Vilaj, representing NG Group Homes LLC, requesting the following waiver from the board: "To construct a new, single-family residence with a non-conforming front yard setback, 26 feet proposed, 40 feet required. The property is located on the east side of Marshall Street between Webster Avenue and Albert Avenue at 30034 Marshall Street, Sidwell Parcel 24-12-279-009. I, the appellant is requesting a waiver of the front yard setback, and I move that we grant a 14-foot reduction of the front yard setback, 40 feet required, 26 proposed, based on the, that the proposed construction is consistent with the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance, and the proposed construction is keeping with the character of the surrounding area, and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties. And I'd like to add the following conditions: that the construction meet all the requirements of the 2015 Michigan Residential Building Code, and the appellant secures all permits and approvals required for the proposed construction."
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Your request is unanimous and granted, so, again, continue to work with the building department on your permitting as you proceed. Okay, thank you. Will the city call the next case, please?
Case number 2329. Madam Chair, if I may, the appellant has emailed a request to postpone this case to an uncertain date.
Okay, so we need a motion to postpone this case to an uncertain date?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Next case is 23-26. The appellant, Rand Construction, representing the owners of Southfield 12 LLC, is requesting the following from the board: "A variance for a number of wall signs, and a wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare. Number of wall signs allowed: one, four proposed. Number of wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: zero allowed, two proposed. The property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Edwards Avenue and 12 Mile Road at 29200 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2412351003, Zoned OS, Office Services. This appeal is to Sections 8.55, Subsection 1, Article 7, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance."
All right, thank you. Is the appellant here?
Hi, I'm John Slack of Rand Construction, at the address 1270 Rickett Road, Brighton.
Great, thank you. Can you explain to the board what you're asking for and why?
Sure, similar to what Wayne stated. We're requesting four additional wall signs on the front-facing portion of the building, as this is a multi-tenant-approved facility through site plan approval. Each sign will be dedicated to a specific tenant, and then on the sides, we're requesting signage due to the size and location of the building, which is consistent with other buildings in that area.
Okay, thank you. Will the city read the findings of fact, please?
Yes, ma'am. Findings of fact for ZBA case 23-26. The appellant, Rand Construction, representing the owner, Southfield 12 LLC, is requesting the following from the board: "A variance for the number of wall signs facing the major thoroughfare: five proposed, one allowed," that's a correction to the legal notice, "and a wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare: two proposed, zero allowed. The property is located on the east side of Southfield Road between Edwards Avenue and 12 Mile Road at 29200 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 2412351003, Zoned OS, Office Services. This appeal is to Sections 8.55, Subsection 1, Article 7, Chapter 99 of the Southfield City Code, more commonly known as the sign ordinance. Properties to the north are Zoned OS, Office Services, and occupied by Comerica Bank. Properties to the south are Zoned Parking and B3, Parking and Business, businesses are, and is occupied by a parking lot, and strip mall. The properties to the east are Zoned RE Residential, and are occupied by single-family homes. The properties to the west across Southfield are Zoned B3 Business, and are occupied by a strip mall. The subject property is Zoned OS, Office Services, and it has one, 121,720-square-foot, three-story self-storage facility with four white box tenant spaces facing Southfield Road that are under construction, permit number PB22-0778. The site has one vehicular entrance and exit along Southfield Road. The appellant is requesting two 100-square-foot wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, one 100-square-foot wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare on the north side, facing the parking lot, and one 100-square-foot wall sign not facing a major thoroughfare on the south side, facing the parking lot, two proposed, zero allowed. They're also asking for four additional 40-square-foot signs for the four tenant spaces facing the major thoroughfare, five proposed, one allowed. The square footage of the signs combined, 460 square feet, is less than the 10%, which is 621 square feet, allowed for conforming signs facing the major thoroughfare."
Okay, thank you. Do you agree with those facts?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other facts you'd like to add at this time?
No.
Okay. Will the city read the staff recommendation, please?
Staff recommendation is for favorable consideration for the waiver requesting two 100-square-foot additional wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero allowed, two proposed, and four 40-square-foot additional signs facing the major thoroughfare, five proposed, one allowed. Recommendation is based on the following: that the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district; the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, and would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties; the proposed sign will not interfere with or be objectionable from a standpoint of traffic safety."
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this time before we open public comment?
The only thing I would add is, there are trees on the right of way in front of the building, which is another reason why we wanted to add signs on the north and south, just because of obstruction.
Okay, thank you. So we will open public comment on this case. If you are here to speak on this case, this is your opportunity to step forward. All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment and turn it over to the board. Mr. Rogers?
I don't have a problem with this granting of these variances.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Libbit?
I have a question.
Sure.
I see you have four retail spaces. What do you see being in those spaces?
Ideally, the tenant that would fill that space would be somebody that would be by appointment, due to available parking in the area, a professional service, something of that nature. At this time, the owner does not have any tenants on lease.
Okay. What is the percentage of the retail space as opposed to the storage space?
The retail space is approximately 8% of the overall square footage.
And the last one is just curiosity. What is the artwork?
The artwork actually is, it's Man on the Beam. I don't know if you can see it in the picture?
I've got a picture of it.
That's the famous sculpture of the famous picture from New York City of the man sitting on top of a beam eating lunch.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem.
I did recognize it. I thought it was very cute. My question is, is there any ground signage, or no?
We do have one monument sign that we'll be placing, which we can do by right.
Okay, so no request on, that sign's already been reviewed and is considered in?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yeah.
Yes, that permit has been issued.
Okay, all right, got it. And is, how many, are any of the retail spaces anticipated to be listed on that monument sign, or just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
There's space for all four.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may, also, the sign for the 1-800 has also been issued, the one that is allowed on the front of the building. They're asking for the four tenant spaces in addition to that one sign.
Okay, got it, okay. All right, I think that's, I think that's all the questions. No, I do have one more question for the city. So the sign on the south is, we say it's not visible to a major thoroughfare, but you really can see it from 12 Mile. Is that not relevant?
Say that again.
The sign on the south side of the building?
Correct.
Is visible from 12 Mile, I think obviously intentionally.
Yeah.
But we say that's not considered?
They don't have frontage on 12 Mile.
Because they don't have, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Rogers, oh, do we, Mr. Friedman?
Nope.
Do you have a question?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure. I have no issues with this if I haven't mentioned that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rogers, will you make a motion?
Yeah. In regards to ZBA case 23-26, the appellant, Rand Construction, representing the owner, Southfield 12 LLC, is requesting the following from the board: "One, a variance for a number of wall signs facing the major thoroughfare: five proposed, one allowed, and wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare: two proposed, zero allowed. Property is located on the east side of Southfield Road, Dean Edwards Avenue, 12 Mile Road, at 29200 Southfield Road, Sidwell Parcel 24-12-351-003, Zoned OS, Office Services. I make a motion to approve this, these waivers, requesting two 100-square-foot additional wall signs not facing a major thoroughfare, zero allowed, two proposed, and four 40-square-foot additional signs facing the major thoroughfare, five proposed, one allowed. I make this motion based on the following: One, the proposed signs are consistent with the spirit and intent of the sign ordinance and the regulations which apply to the zoning district; Two, the proposed signs are in keeping with the character of the surrounding area, would not have an adverse or detrimental effect on adjacent or surrounding properties; and Three, the proposed signs will not interfere with or be objectionable from the standpoint of traffic safety."
Okay, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Your variances are granted, and, again, work with the city on your permitting. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, will the city call the next case, please?
Madam Chair, if I may, address the board.
Yes.
Case 23-27, as per the planning department, have asked for a motion to be made to dismiss without prejudice.
Okay.
There's an existing variance on this property that goes with the land that they've, would like this dismissed without prejudice.
Okay, can I have a motion to dismiss 2327 without prejudice?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Can I ask a question? Is there a fee refunded?
Is there what?
Is there fee refunded?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that closes our public hearing, and moving on in the agenda, looks like we have minutes from November 21st. Did anyone have any changes or corrections or concerns?
Move approval as submitted of the minutes of 11:21, 2023.
Great, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Okay, minutes are approved. Next is discussion of our next meeting, which is January 16th.
So, most of these cases are gonna be through the planning department, and Sarah will present them.
Okay. So, okay, commercial, commercial, three commercial cases, okay, got it. All right, so then we move to our annual meeting, I guess. In order on the agenda, we start with election of officers, which is a chair and a secretary, I guess, so I'm happy to continue on if you don't want me to. If somebody else wants to take over as chair, I'm also happy to hand it over.
So moved.
Okay, then. I accept, and all in favor? Aye. Okay, and I would make a motion if Mr. Friedman's willing to stay on as secretary?
Sure.
Okay, sounds good. Do you have documents to be assigning?
I believe he has. I don't have anything in progress.
Oh, okay, is there material that he was supposed to?
I'm willing to sign.
Okay, we'll get to it.
I brought a pen.
Which is rare.
Which is rare, yes.
Okay, so, motion to appoint Mr. Friedman as our secretary for the next year. Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, next up is our calendar, which I think we maybe have some changes on?
Yes, I was notified by the clerk's office that August 6th and November 5th are gonna need to be rescheduled. The council chambers are already booked.
Yeah.
So if you wouldn't mind, I can take a look at what the Tuesday date would be, email those dates out to the board for final approval for those two meetings.
A lot of times, what we've done in those election months is, we've just had one meeting planned, and if, for some reason, if we have to call a special meeting because of volume, we certainly can, but I think we've made it work in prior years with just one meeting in those months.
Yeah, it works for me.
So, anybody else? Okay, all right, so can I have a motion to approve the schedule removing August 6th and November 5th?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, and then next up is a review of our rules of procedure. So, looks like there was at least one item that was recommended to change from staff, I'm assuming? I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that. Request for proof of ownership or proof of site control of the property. I think there's definitely been some, it's been, I think, our practice to not grant variances until people had ownership or site control, either contractual or actual ownership. I think that makes a lot of sense, because a lot, many, many real estate deals fall apart.
Yes, they do.
And it doesn't make sense to grant a variance that stays with the property forever if someone doesn't have those, that site control or ownership. So I think that was a suggestion, because I think the, unfortunately, the planning department has tried to push us along a couple times, and we've rejected taking those cases, just based on a planned development, so.
So do we need a motion? Is this an adjustment, or is it?
It's an addition.
It's an addition, okay.
Yep, I think it's an addition to these, yeah. So, but I think we can, is there anything else? Was that the only item in there? I thought there were two items.
Number five, failure of the appellant or his or her appointed representative to appear at the public hearing shall be justifiable cause of dismissal of the case.
Oh, okay, what page?
Same page.
Oh, same page. Did I just scroll over it?
Number three and number five.
Oh, got it. I see it's highlighted. Is that an addition?
Yes, number three, four, and five.
Oh, three, four, and five are all additions?
Yep, on page three and page four, it's just, yeah, that's the remaining.
Okay, so all of those items are additions. Any discussion on, so, in regards to number five, we generally have not done that. We have tried to reach them. We have tried to reach them, we have made a call while we're in the meeting to try to reach their appointee, I guess it doesn't say we're required to.
Yeah, I mean.
But it is.
It gives us plenty of discretion.
Yeah, gives us the discretion, okay.
So would you like a motion?
Yes, I think so.
I move that the, number three, the application for appeals for interpretation, adjustments, special exceptions, or modification of the requirements of the zoning or sign ordinances shall be made in the name of the owner or at the discretion of the board by persons having substantial interest and rights, such as land, contract, purchaser, optionee, et cetera, in the premises affected. And I'd like to bifurcate these two.
Yeah, I think it's fine to put them all into one motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
As well as failure of the appellant or his or her appointee representative to appear at the public hearing shall be justifiable cause for dismissal of the case.
Okay, do we need to read four, two, I think?
Letter I, proof of ownership.
Okay. Proof of ownership or other proof of site control of the property at issue. Where variance request is for uncombined lots, the request for variance, special conditions and circumstances shall not be the result from the actions of the applicant. Such applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or may be represented by attorney or agent at the hearings. The attorney or agent shall be authorized by the owner's written letter unless he or she is present at the hearing.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned about it. In the past, we've let people phone in their approval. It, you know, the written. If that could, you know, if that could say something like authorized by the owner, so that would allow us the opportunity to have somebody, you know, in a situation where, where an agent is here, that we can contact the owner, have them approve over the phone or something like that.
We've done that in the past.
Yeah, but I'm saying this, this seems to require a written letter.
Or something in writing, which could be a text or an email.
Yeah.
So the attorney and you should think that something should be in writing.
I'd like to give us the opportunity to, to, to allow somebody here, I, I know we've done it in the past. Somebody had to call in and authorize the agent.
The person that was here, right. So what could we add to that clause to say, by, by discretion of the board, a verbal authorization may be granted?
Or, or we could just say it, the attorney or agent shall be authorized by, you could just.
Because I think the staff is concerned that they're not covered if they do it not in our presence.
So how do we know who you're talking to on the phone?
Right, so we're, when we're calling, we're calling the number that's on the application, which you assume.
In, in the past, staff has been in contact with the owner who has put in the application, and then the agent is here, and we don't have an authorization.
Didn't realize they weren't.
And so we've called, the staff has called the, the owner directly, says this person authorized to act on your behalf, and they've, they've approved it.
Madam Chair, for clarity, in previous hearings that we did that, they put the phone right up to the microphone, so it was in.
Right, but that wouldn't be a written letter, you know, in that case. So I'm just saying, or should be say, request of various, where is this? By written letter or direct authorization of the board, you know, just add.
Understood.
They could do it.
Obviously, by whatever means necessary.
No, but I, I mean, I think direct, yeah, authorization of the board, that gives us flexibility.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Direct authorization to the board. So I mean, that means they have to tell us somehow, directly or, or written letter to say.
Right. Okay, is that a friendly amendment that's acceptable to your motion? Yes?
I'm hesitant, but okay, I believe in.
Yeah, I think because it says to us, right? It's authorization to us, not to.
I believe in voting us as much power as we can vote ourselves.
[laughing].
Let's make ourselves counsel while we're here.
Right, there we go. Okay, so if, I need a second then, still.
Second.
Okay, thank you. So all in favor of the proposed amendment, or proposed additions to the rules of procedure plus the friendly amendment signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's maybe the fastest discussion we've ever had of our procedures. So I would guess, I don't know if it's thank the staff or thank the city attorney for the thoughtful recommendations of challenges we've had, so. Okay, any other miscellaneous? No? Okay, then I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.